Welcome, everybody. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mary Brannley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Here.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Thank you. Student reps, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Annie Kaneska?
He's muted.
Here.
Thank you. Is Katie here?
No cake make it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Here.
Jeff Frante?
Yes.
Charles Gabron?
He's muted.
Yeah.
Here.
Brian Haas?
Here.
Wayne White?
He's muted.
Wayne's having audio issues.
Okay.
We may have to read that back in.
Okay. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on June 16, 2021. An act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension until April 1, 2022, the remote meeting provisions of his March 12, 2020, executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows the public bodies to continue providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body, instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting law's requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law and regulations, such as their requirements regarding posting notice of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes, remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, remote, or both. This committee is convened by Zoom video conferences posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Use the raise your hand function now if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting so that I can make note of it. Okay. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2021-2022 Agendas, under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynardk12.ma.us. And that's the number four. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comment agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everybody has the opportunity to be heard. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizens' comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaker concludes their remarks, I will ask each member in turn if they have a single comment, question, or motion that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off on speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So a roll call to come to order. Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Mary Brannley?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Let's see. Okay. Citizens' comments. Okay. This is, the first one is from Caitlin Vasquez, 19 Nick Lane. Hello, my name is Caitlin Vasquez and I am a Maynard parent. In light of the research, public health officials, including Mass DPH, Governor Baker, and Desi, I urge you to follow the officials and vote to limit the mask mandate for MPS. If the state is saying to lift them, then we do. There's nothing more to it. Nothing about Maynard makes us special. We are a small town and not a large city with high numbers. Give families a choice. Okay. Next one is, my name is Sheena McNamara. Address 77 Wellham Street. After the last SC meeting, I feel like not only was I not heard, but that my son doesn't matter. I was appalled that one of the SC members that runs CPAC so quickly ignored and changed the subject when my son's personal struggles were addressed, thankfully by the other CPAC SC members. So I will say it again, my son is 10 years old and autistic. His whole life, he has had thousands of hours of therapy to help him learn to understand emotions and what facial expressions connect to which emotions. This has helped him navigate through life school and understand the context of situations and conversations. We've worked on big problems versus little problem and inappropriate emotional responses. Not being able to see people's expressions has caused my son so much anxiety. We have added therapists both in and out of school. You rely on your eyesight to navigate through your day. Imagine how you would feel if that was taken away. This is what my son has felt for two years. We have done the best we can to help him adjust and cope. Why is it my child has to suffer to protect your child? Why is your child's health and well-being more important than my child's? It's not. The data has proven that none of the methods implemented to curb the spread have worked. Children have a 99.9496% survival rate. You have options to protect your family. I don't have any other options to help my son, and I am thoroughly disgusted that one of the women appointed to represent children with disabilities so carelessly dismissed this issue when it was brought to her attention after she tried to say, there are masked exemptions for those with disabilities, which obviously doesn't solve this issue. There was no, what are our options? Nothing, just switch the subject and ignore. I will not be ignored. My son deserves to walk with sight. Hopefully, the comparison will make you think about it before you so easily dismiss him and switch the subject. The rest of that message that's over the limit will be included in the minutes. Brian and Sheena Higdon, 178 Summer Street. We are ready to advocate to remove any all pandemic regulations in the Maynard School District, notably the mask mandate. Yesterday evening, 2/17, local news reported that Boston's COVID metrics are only 4.6 positivity rate, 91% ICU capacity, and under 300 total people hospitalized. All are incredibly low. In addition, the current restrictions pertain to a time when the vaccine was not available, and evidence shows it is very effective at managing risk of the virus. We should lift the current restrictions to align with other leading nations that have vaccinated their populations, lifted mask mandates, and no longer act with partisan or ideological motives, given that the risk is clearly being mitigated. At this point in time, we don't believe the archaic pandemic restrictions are required. Rather, the school district should shift its focus back to the mental health of our children and quality of childhood experiences. Ellen Murphy, 18 Old Marlboro Road. Effective today, February 25, according to the CDC, the agency is still advising that people, including schoolchildren, wear masks where the risk of COVID is high. That's the situation in about 37% of US counties where about 28% of Americans reside. And then there's a hyperlink to a site. Do I read the link? Like read the address of the link? No. Um. If you scroll about halfway down, you can enter the state and county. Middlesex County is at a low. Um. Comment to, okay. So the second one, Colleen, is the second one, a second comment, so shouldn't it be read?
It's a second comment. So that's how we know that.
Okay. Hello, Brian and school committee members. My name is Jamie Carroll, and I'm sure most of you know me. I am the president of Maynard Youth Football and have coached youth sports in Maynard for the past six years or so, including baseball, softball, and basketball. I also have three children at Fowler Middle School. I think I have a really good grasp on the school, on school kids and masks. I understand the concerns on COVID. It has been a long two years for all of us. In the beginning, I believe Maynard schools have taken the necessary precautions needed to deal with this pandemic. The time is now to lift the mask mandate. All surrounding towns are removing their mandates. There is no reason to delay this anymore. If any parent, teacher, or student still wants to wear masks, they can. It is time to make mask-wearing optional. These kids have been through a lot these last two years. It's time for them to be kids again. Show off their smiles to their teachers and fellow students. They need to breathe in real air and not the fabric of a mask. Although some of you might still, some of you still might be concerned about COVID, please think of other issues that also affect these students. Many are suffering from mental health issues, anxiety, et cetera. Having them hide behind a mask and promote fear does not help them. I really hope you do the right thing and remove the mask mandate immediately. I know there are many parents and students that plan on stopping wearing them anyway. Please do the right thing and get this done. Follow the lead of our neighboring towns. You are not putting our students in danger by removing masks. Let us parents be parents and make our own decisions. Sincerely, Jamie Carroll, 36 Howard Road, Maynard Mass, 01754. Jeffrey Man, 39 Fairfield Street. Attention, members of the Maynard School Committee. It has come to the attention of myself and many, myself, many parents and residents that you are no longer making decisions with our best interests in mind. You have made it clear that you have no intention of following state or local guidance to allow masking as optional, and you have ignored your own public survey showing the public's preference. Your authority to make decisions as a public official is not derived from the personal feelings you hold on these issues. You have been selective with numbers and stats that are not in your favor and disregarded other data and information to maintain the necessary narrative of supporting your personal views and agendas. You have misrepresented and understated the statistics regarding the vaccination rates of the middle school and high school. You have ignored a plethora of information showing the developmental impairment of keeping children masked, and you may find you have caused bodily harms, psychological damage, and educational deprivation to many children in our school system. Following the science of your choices is contrary to reason, as you are not following the science yourselves, but following the money makes it very much evident that funding is your overall goal. Your mask-wearing policy, modifying of facilities to accommodate physical distancing, and your push for improved ventilation, among other things, appears to be driven by procurement of funding. While the full impact of your policies and procedures on our youth may not be immediately apparent, the legal action that can be taken against you is observable. You are acting beyond the scope of your authority and in the process create, crossing the boundaries of numerous federal, state, and international laws, regulations, and codes, including but not limited to unlawful discrimination in a place of public accommodation, the right to free and equal access of public accommodations, the right to privacy, conspiracy against rights, and unlawful delegation of medical services, criminal harassment, and the Geneva Declaration of the Rights of the Child. This comment, along with the letter I have sent you all individually, including more detail, and then it continues beyond the bar limit, and that will be included in the minutes. Erin Garcia, 3 Lincoln Street. Thank you for your service and dedication to the Maynard Public Schools, especially during a time with highly charged topics with so many emotions attached. The CDC has updated its recommendations for schools to make masks optional for those communities that fall within what is considered low level for COVID-19. Middlesex County currently falls within that range. And there's a citation. I got a hyperlink. Surrounding communities have all made the informed decision to end mandatory mask-wearing in their schools in early March. If this group chooses to extend the timeline for mandatory masking beyond early March, I hope they will be providing specific data and information on why Maynard was unable to do the same. I know many of us here tonight are eager to hear Superintendent Haas's masking recommendation. Thank you. Christine Carroll, 36 Howard Road. Dear Maynard School Committee, first of all, thank you for guiding our schools during such an incredibly difficult period. Secondly, our children are facing severe learning deficits because of COVID-19 mitigations, specifically mask-wearing. Young children and students with special needs are struggling to learn basic human interaction and empathy skills as a result of mask-wearing. The growing mental health crisis has been staggeringly high for some students. I have a child that has anxiety and emotional issues. Many children have already suffered from social, emotional, and mental distress related to masking. I ask that you take immediate action to free our students from mask mandates. The school committee has been following the guidelines of Desi and the CDC and should continue to do so by lifting the mandate immediately. Please allow students and their families to decide what is best for them. Thank you, Christine. Jessica Noble, Powder Mill Road. It is time to make mask optional now, not next week or in two weeks, today. My boys have spent the last 10 days in a country with no restrictions. My older son made a comment about how great it was not to wear a mask for six hours a day. At this point in the pandemic, keeping masks in place is only for perception to the ones that are afraid of the virus or are immune compromised. I get it, you want them to feel safe. But the perception to the majority of the parents' children that wish to have a choice is that the school is not safe. Experts have deemed schools safe without masks. Whether to wear a mask should be a choice for parents and/or a student. The school committee has a duty to their students, staff, and parents to act in the best interest of all students. I ask you to base your decision on logic and science, not fear and emotion. Infectious disease experts in the CDC have stated that masks are no longer needed. The CDC has stated that N95 respirators and other high-quality masks are highly effective at protecting the wearers, regardless of what people around them are doing. So wouldn't this be a solution that would benefit all students and teachers? The federal government are giving them out for free. It is perceived by a large number of parents' guardians that members of the school committee feel that mental health is not an issue with students from mask-wearing. Have any of you spoken with the student counselors or guidance counselors regarding the mental health of MPS students? Have you spoken with Maynard Board of Health regarding their opinion on the mask mandate? Parents wanting their children's lives to return to normal is not about convenience, and it is not about being selfish and heartless to our community. It is about their childhood. It is about them learning emotionally and academically in the very best environment. If you cannot put your personal feelings aside and base your decision on logic and science, you do not belong on the school committee. Dear school committee members, I'm ready to thank you for your ongoing consideration of student and staff safety. If mask-wearing becomes optional in the Maynard Public Schools, I hope you will put in place guidelines about maximizing air filtration and ventilation. Classes with opening windows should have proper screens so that they can be opened as much as possible, even if children with insect allergies are present. This should be mandatory, not at a teacher's discretion. Also, under what circumstances would you reinstate a mask requirement? If the CDC risk level rises above green, would that happen? Is there any chance of maintaining the mask requirement at Green Meadow until the preschoolers are eligible for vaccination? Finally, who will enforce the day 6 through 10 mask requirement for students and staff returning to school after a five-day COVID isolation? Thank you for your consideration and work to keep our community safe. Sincerely, Julie Buzar, 1 Mayfield Street. Are there any new ones?
Nope, nothing else in email.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um. All right, student representative report, Annie?
Hello. I do have a few updates tonight. So the NHS Theater Department is putting on Into the Woods for the musical this year. And that's happening from March 11th to 13th, and the tickets are on sale now. So they're hard at work rehearsing for that right now. There's also been some sports happening. The hockey team with ACAB is having a playoff game tonight, and tomorrow night is playoff games for girls' and boys' basketball. And coming up, I think in the next few weeks, there should, we're going to have some spirit weeks for March Madness and probably some competitions between the grades. So that's something that the student council is putting on, that all the students are getting ready for. I also had a question on behalf of the National Honor Society. So the president of NHS reached out to me. So we usually do our homecoming dance in the fall, but this year that wasn't able to happen. So they were looking for some guidance from the school committee about whether we would be able to have a homecoming dance at Maynard High School within the coming months. And they did say they were willing to meet any COVID restrictions that were needed, and they were just curious on whether that would be something that could happen within the next few months.
Thank you. Brian, do you have, do you want, should we talk about that now, or is that something we should schedule to talk about at a future meeting?
Actually, I think once the, the main portion of tonight's meeting about the mask policy is discussed, that probably answers that question, and then it really becomes a building-level administrative issue.
Can I ask a question about that, though? With the, is that, would, because it would be indoors, right, is what we're saying, versus outdoors? I know last year they had some, we've had some outdoor events in the past, is that right, Annie?
Yeah, I think, I assume that they want it to be indoor.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because we could do it outdoor regardless of the masking policy. It's more that the intent would be looking to have it indoors, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Do you know what they meant when they said they would meet any COVID restrictions? Were they thinking they might have it outdoors?
I think, I don't know exactly whether they wanted it indoors and outdoors. I assume they were meaning indoors, and they, they were saying we'll have masks at the dance or something like that. Okay. We needed to do outdoors. I'm sure we could talk to them and see what they thought as well.
I'm not sure that whether or not we have a mask policy would make the decision whether or not they can have a dance.
That seems, actually.
Yeah, I would, I would be in favor of them having a dance. I think it's more the, the physical location of, sounds like, I think it's possible, I don't know, finance or all those other operational things that, to be determined, I think we, Brian, those, regardless of our decision for masking, would that be possible? Is that what the building is a feel would be?
I'm confident we can work out how and where to have a dance.
Okay. I can't, you wouldn't need a vote from the school committee to do this. So this is just, like, we don't have any objection to a dance, assuming the administration and the students work out what they want and, you know, whatever court restrictions are necessary.
Yeah, have a dance.
Yeah. We definitely want you to have the dance.
Yeah, we do.
You guys?
I had a couple other questions, if that, if we're, for Annie.
Okay.
That's okay. Annie, I'm also very excited to hear about all the playoff events. I'm actually, tomorrow, myself, looking forward to going to the basketball games. And I heard that there's some themed to the events. Is that something that you know a little bit more about? Is it?
Yeah, so usually at, like, the home games, there's like a theme that the fan section wears. I don't know, sometimes it's like a whiteout or a pinkout, and everyone wears that one color. Or I think tomorrow is like tropical themed, so everyone dresses tropical, just as kind of like a fun thing for like the fans section to do, like.
Is it for the boys and the girls, the same theme? Because they're both, they're both in Maynard, right?
I'm not sure about that. I would have to check, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Brian's nodding too.
He's nodding, yes.
The girls is at 4:30, boys, I believe, 6:30.
But they both follow that, like, the themed, but it's trop, that's, you know, I want to make sure we get all, all those details are important.
If they're both home, I assume they have the same theme, yeah.
Awesome.
Oh, yeah, they're both, they're both tropical themed tomorrow.
Very excited, and also the, the theater, Into the Woods, also very, very exciting stuff. It's only that one weekend, right? Is that what I heard, right, it's 11 through the 13?
Yeah, I believe there's three shows over the course of that weekend, so.
All right, terrific, thank you so much. Oh, and one more question, sorry. Do they sell concessions at the home games for the playoffs? Is that anything that they do in the past, or is it just strictly playing?
They had concessions when I went to a home game last time, so there should be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
I just, I had a comment, if I could. Annie, I think you had left the school committee meeting the last time when we were talking about the masks, and I was really commending the high school for having 85% vaccination. Good on all you guys, you really, you stepped up as usual, and it was really commendable. So share that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? No. Okay, thank you, Annie. Thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us and answer our questions. We really appreciate it. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're welcome to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annie.
Okay, superintendent's report?
Absolutely, I'm excited to be here. I am going to ask, so for a change, I did it in presentation mode so that everybody could see it, as opposed to me reading the numbers and charts and whatnot. I thought in this case, it would just be easier to see. So Colleen will start us off just by turning it on. Yep, and hopefully you can see it at this point. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Yes, good, okay, Colleen, next page. Thank you, and so some of it's a little bit of a review, we'll get to it relatively quickly. But these are our participation rates in routine COVID testing. As you can see, they're relatively strong. And our vaccination rates, which have been updated, due, so at Green Meadow, we have 66%, because pre-K is not old enough to get vaccinated, and Fowler's 67%, and we just, that was a correction, and Maynard High is at 85%. So good for them. So you can see our vaccination rates are relatively strong across all three schools.
Brian, can I just ask a question? So when we had the last meeting, Fowler was like at 53%. Did we have that many more students?
No, it was, it was just an error in, in math.
It's a good error, so it's okay.
It is a good error, but it's not more, exactly.
Oh, thank you for clarifying that, because I was, yeah.
Yep, just.
This makes a lot more sense.
Yes.
It does, I agree.
Thank you.
Colleen, next, please. And again, so you'll see a bunch of different results. So we did, in fact, ask students to respond the week before break, so on February 15th. So you can see, they were about a 70/30, I'm rounding there in terms of who would prefer optional versus require the existing mandate. You saw this already, I was just refreshing your memory, as I know this is the topic of conversation tonight. And next slide, thank you. So the teachers did a survey themselves prior, so this was a while ago, this was almost a month ago, February 10th. This is where they teach, so you can see it was divided up pretty evenly. And then what they preferred back in February before a lot of guidance was 50/50 in terms of keep the mask or not. And next slide. So about a week and a half later or so, we did a survey, including staff and parents. And you can see our results for staff are a little bit different. We're closer to the 60/40 mark in terms of 60% would prefer it be optional, 40% maintain the requirement. And again, parents, we're right around the same point, 55/40, 60/40, if we're rounding there, so very similar results. So, and we know, because it was pointed out last time, the survey was not perfect, that you could have, in fact, entered information more than once, so I still feel like it's a valid point of data, not perfect, but valid. And this was. Um, and this would be our paraprofessionals, our MES, our support teachers. Um, and they were in terms of in favor of lifting the mandate, it was, uh, forty-five, uh, sorry, fifty-five, yes, forty-five, no. Because it was optional or just lift the mandate at the second question gets combined. So again, they were right in the same ballpark as the other groups. Um, no real new news, so thanks, oh, go back one. So this is nice, I, I'll give, uh, the board of health, John Robertson, uh, a lot of credit, he helps me out with this, this comes directly from him this week. Um, and you can just see that we certainly spiked at the very beginning of January, if we look at the all number, the bottom row of the top section. Um, tho- those numbers were kind of scary at the one fifty-five, one ninety-three, one eighty-six numbers, but they dropped considerably. Um, and so on the bottom section, the bottom chart actually is down at the nine and ten range, which is really for the whole all age group, that's under five and over eighteen. Um, and we're really in that middle section of two, three and two, so the numbers have remained nice and low. Next slide, and this is the same information, just graphically. I like this one better, but if you don't have the numbers, I think it's a little bit hard to tell. That's why I included both for you. And next slide, please, thank, so, and I think several people reference this site, so this is not even new news. It was new this week, it was actually really. Easy to manipulate, easy to use, um, the COVID nineteen community levels at the top is a hyperlink which takes you and you can select. Middlesex or county, and then it tells you where you are right now, we're in fact below. Um, and it tells you, you know, what you would have to do is stay up to date and get tested. Um, so this is, and this is a live site, it's just, it's there, you can do it every day. Next slide. Oh, that was backwards, we'll go forwards. Excellent, and you can see as of February twenty eighth, we were in fact low, um, and we still are as of today. And so this is a nice, easy check for everybody, anybody can do it, I'm not all that special, I just came across it, CDC. Um, you can see it's link, hyperlink at the bottom. Next slide, please, Colleen. Uh, this is just pulled right, right from that, right from the CDC in terms of public transportation, so before vacation. This was not even a question, it was just in place that you had to have a mask on public transportation. Um, airports, school buses, et cetera, they've changed that, as of now, you don't have to on school buses, as long as you don't have a policy in place that says you do. Um, so just again, and it's hyperlink to the CDC site on the bottom for your reference. And this is the Department of Education, again, you can sort of see, just numbers are significantly lower, um, for positive cases, they've really fallen off significantly. Um, as, as February has gone on, we're grateful to say it's about time. And next slide. And this is a nice page, so this came right out of the Boston Globe. Beginning of, at the end of February, excuse me, these are all the systems, many of them around us that are dropping their, their current mask mandate, so you can just see. That it's very common at this point, um, some of them have dates that they've committed to, whether it was the seventh or the fourteen. Some of them in fact were earlier, they were the twenty-eighth of this week, um, and there's a little bit of a range, but it's a lot of districts. Yep, so my recommendation to you as superintendent, let's see, yep, I would recommend that we rescind the current policy. And effective Monday, March seventh, it gives everybody a day or so to just adjust, have some conversations at home if need be with, you know, families. Cause not everybody, you know, it's obvious from the, from the emails and the letters written, there's people who are on both sides of this, if you will. Um, so Monday would give everybody a chance to have some conversations at home and get used to that. And given the changes in the last two weeks from the Department of Public Health, the CDC, our own internal. Um, conversations, so in effect, I would recommend rescinding it effective March seventh. For Maynard High School, the Fowler School, the Green Meadow School, and no, we're no longer require masks on buses as of Monday. I did also share this with our entire administrative team and nurses at school as well, they were unanimous about this. In fact, kind of funny, the only two people who had different opinions said, well, could you start Friday? So they were looking for tomorrow. Just point of reference, and in addition, we did a little work this afternoon, just looking at. Cause there's been conversation about, do you rescind the policy or do you need a new policy? Most of the, many of the schools around us have simply rescinded the policy. So we took a quick glance of twenty surrounding districts and fifteen of them rescinded, five in fact amended the policy. Uh, but looking at districts around us like Concord, Neshoba, Sudbury, they've all rescinded their policy, just for frame of reference for you. And then finally, just a couple of additional really key information pieces that I think are really important. And actually, the third bullet I'll start with, because I think it's probably the most important one, is that I don't honestly expect. Every single kid or adult to not come to school with a mask, like that's not reasonable, I think people will want to continue to wear a mask, some of them. So the third bullet being that we will continue to create an accepting environment where all choices will be respected. Um, we do that anyway, but I think in this case, we want to be hyper vigilant about that and sensitive to that. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that's been part of the conversations all the way along with all of the people at, at school. Um, masks will still be required in nurses' office, um, and we'll have masks there if kids, if kids or staff need them, that's not a problem. Um, and nurses will continue to inform individuals, staff and students, if they've reported that they're positive about the six to ten day. They need to wear a mask and a mask that fits, uh, that hasn't changed at this point. Um, and we know that we may need to revisit this at some point, we, we don't know what we don't know, and that's been a consistent theme since two years ago. But I stand by my recommendation to you at this point in time. So thank you. I think that might be the last slide, Colleen, there you go, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think I want to go around and see if everybody has questions first before we get into comments. Um, and I actually just thought of a question that I, um, probably shouldn't have asked you previously. Um, but I was looking at, um. I just, I'm a little bit worried about, uh, the agreement to, um. Potentially bargain over, uh, mask wearing policy with the unions.
We don't have, what do you, I'm not sure I'm following the question.
Okay.
The MO, is it the MOA's you're talking about that are in place?
Yeah. Like we specifically state that the MEA has, um, the right to bargain over the mask policy. Um, and so I just want to make sure that we're not going to, before we get into the policy, that we're not going to create any issues there by, um. Making a decision without, uh, that process.
Now, I'll talk to the union in the morning, based on what happens tonight, but they've been informed of everything going on, they've been part of the conversations. And they've been surveying their membership, we've surveyed them, there's been conversations all the way along, so this is a very expected next transition.
Okay, um, can we, whatever we vote on, um, can we make it with a caveat that you'll check, um, the wording of the MOUs? Be, um, before implementing any change? Um, to make sure that we're not going to.
I think we, I'm sure we have that somewhere.
I have it open right now, and it says, yeah, and it says the association reserves the right to bargain over said policy.
So it might, I wonder, Brian, then, um, cause I know the survey from the, the MEA was not clear in a majority. Um, one way or the other, so has the, um, maybe this would be a conversation for the union leadership to. If they've, um, if a policy was rescinded, is that something, have you gotten confirmation that they would not be? Want to bargain over, I guess that would be probably something to help inform.
Yeah, I'll talk with them in the morning, they, they haven't actually asked.
Okay.
Okay.
So I will certainly reach out to them.
So my, but my question is, it. What we're doing tonight is we're changing our policy, not rescinding.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Um, what, what the proposal tonight from, from my point of view is that we're not, we're changing our policy, we're not rescinding it, like we're not getting rid of it altogether.
I think that's what, yeah, the, that's what mask has presented, right, an amended policy.
Right.
The Mass, Massachusetts, so, and so I think what Brian shared earlier was that some school districts have. Proceeded with that, and then some school districts have just rescinded that, so I, I think we probably would want to decide or. First, what is our preference? Do we want to proceed with amending?
Well, I think there's two, there's two things, right, there's the policy and then there's the mask mandate. So I think that, if I'm hearing Brian correctly, he's saying rescind, he's recommending rescinding the mask mandate, but not rescinding the policy.
No, he's recommending rescinding the policy. When we left the subcommittee meeting on Monday, the plan was to modify the policy, making mask wearing optional. Um, like, following discussions now and such, Brian's recommendation was to rescind the policy.
That's correct, and that's what the, the majority of districts around us have done, they've rescinded the policy. And I did get confirmation that there is no need to bargain with the union on this issue, just to put that to rest. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Yeah, Brian, I just wanted to ask, did you actually talk to any of these towns to find out why they decided to just rescind rather than amend? To me, it seems like to have the safeguards in place would be a better way to go, but I didn't know if I'm missing something.
I think if we, I, I did not reach out to them specifically and talk to them, it was just a quick look online to gather the data.
Okay.
It's probably easier, I mean.
Boston Globe site, you mean, that list?
So the, the one page that had seventy-five school systems was strictly from the Boston Globe. And then during the, the day today, Colleen has reached out to other districts and looked online to see who simply rescinded. And who's amended policies, and the majority around us have rescinded.
Okay.
Um, I noticed someone has their hand raised, and I just wanted to state that we, um, we're, we're past the citizens' comment section of the meeting, but you're welcome to email us. Um. Your, um, comments. Uh, sorry, back to questions, um.
Would it be something, so I, I guess, I'll, I'll say I would. I would be in favor of amending the policy, I think that's the mind frame. I, based on the information that had been presented from the policy subcommittee, that I was expecting to lead into tonight. So, um, I think changing the total rescinding of the policy seems new. And not in something that I had entirely been, um, thinking about in that way. Um, I don't know if it's much of a difference though, to be honest with you, okay, so I want to also, I also want to put that out there, right? What we're talking about is really very insignificant in the outcome, right, because the outcome for both. Might just be that at some date to be determined, masking is optional, with the policy amendment is just putting some. Um, beliefs a little bit more fine tuned on, um, things that might be of more importance to us versus leaving it completely. Up for interpretation, I guess, as things change, I know, that's my view, I don't know.
Well, I'd like to hear, um, maybe Hillary and Brian, whoever wants to talk to it, you know, what are the pros and cons of both of these ideas?
My understanding is that there isn't much difference either way, um. Basically, there's nothing in the policy, nothing would, in practice, there'd be no difference. Either way, come whatever day, this would become an effect. Um, regardless of whether or not, my initial concern was I wanted to make sure that we gave Brian the power to. Um, implement targeted mask policies if an outbreak is detected in, you know, a class or a grade. Um, he can do that anyway, even if we don't have a policy saying that. Um, that could be an operational decision based on the information he's given. Um. I think that the portion about the CDC guidelines, um, saying that if it's a low or medium risk. Masks could be optional, um, and therefore if it's a high risk, masks could be, would be required again. Um, that can all be, um. Done anyway, like, I would probably expect that we would notice a trend far before we hit that point. Um. I, when, when we left the policy subcommittee meeting, I was committed to thinking that we needed it to be amended and not rescinded. Um. The more I thought about it, I'm not sure there's a huge benefit either way. Um, but I'm interested in, in Brian's perspective on wanting it rescinded instead.
Sure, and I think you've kind of clarified it pretty well, that there really is not a big difference, so in terms of rescinding it, then it becomes an individual's choice. Whether you're a student or a staff member, which I think is what the policy in itself does as well.
Right.
So when you're asking what's the difference, it doesn't seem to be a difference to me, if the policy is. You can if you want, which we support wholly, you don't have to if you don't want, we support that wholly as well. To me, it doesn't serve a purpose, I thought, which is why I think many of the districts have said, we'll just rescind the policy. And support individual choice.
But, okay, so then, so then why not just have a policy so that we are saying that this is what we're doing, and I guess my other question then is. You know, as someone brought up in the letters, you know, like COVID keeps changing and things keep being, are very fluid. So is there, like, what is the better option for us as, as things move forward, given that things aren't always going to be this? You know, and why, and why, and why are you so strongly for rescinding the policy?
Personally, it doesn't, it gets to the same outcome, so if you were to rescind.
But for now.
But, and a policy which says you don't have to wear a mask unless you want to, is the same thing, because we're not going to have a, I don't think. There's an intent to have a polit. I guess, my, that's my understanding of the policy, it would simply say that if you want to wear a mask, you may. It's not, I don't believe it would say much more than that.
I would say that, I'm sorry.
Sorry, the part about the, you know, codifying the rule about the day six to ten. Um, could be helpful to have there to remind people, um.
And also the piece, yeah, also the piece about, um, supporting individual choices, because bullying is such a big deal. To have that in writing and be able to speak to it, and the third piece is the school committee giving authority to the superintendent, so rather than being reactive and waiting for us. For Brian to be able to step in, those are the pieces that I really like about the amended, um, policy, but.
Yeah, to some, I think that in practice, all of those things can happen anyway, just through Brian's emails to families. One thing I like about having them codified in the email, in the protocol, the policy, is that when the school sends out the information, updated information to families. You know, it's not saying, you know, we're done with masks. It's all over, um, it's saying masks are now optional, however, don't forget, you can't bully people because of their choices. We reserve the right to reinstate masks as needed, you still have to wear them from day six to ten. Um, you have to be one of the health office, so it, it sort of gives more weight.
So can I, can I make a suggestion then, since it sounds like not everybody is settled on totally rescind, like rescinding? I mean, we could always rescind the policy in a month or two months, whatever, that's always a possibility, I think at this point, since the outcome will be the same. I personally also would like to have some information codified, there's been so much change with COVID. Um, with where we are, I think it kind of holds us to, you know, putting at this moment, this is what it is, and then we can revisit it if things change. Um, but I think circling around some of those things might be. May feel less important to some people, but I think, um, codifying some of what's important to. Other members of the community and what we believe, Mary made some great points about the, the bullying and, you know, respecting people's choice. I think that's what policy is, right? You codify things that you believe are inherently important to you as a school committee and. And as a district, so. I would be in favor of just looking at, maybe we could read over the policy together that we, it's already been, Maro, I think, presented. And, and kind of go from there.
Sure, um. I think what I'm hearing is that some people don't think it matters either way, and some people want it, um, modified instead of rescinded. In which case it seems like that would be a good, like.
Yeah, for me, I just, I'm not sure how it plays out later and where, and where it ends up being. Um, you know, because it's all uncharted, and I want to make sure that we, we are doing the best we can for our whole community and especially for our kids, you know? So I want to make sure that we're not making a mistake now that later we'll be like, I wish we hadn't, wish we hadn't done that, you know?
Yeah, I think I, I could see the section about, though requiring the day six to ten be masked, coming from the school committee could be helpful as opposed to it just coming. From the CDC that people may or may not choose to follow in terms of, terms of enforcement. Recognizing that it's hard to enforce anyway, um. So do you want me to, um, read it so that everyone?
Can we do, uh, maybe a, I don't know if it'd be helpful to do a screen share, or this, was this, was this in the? Public packet, I don't believe it was, right? Okay, I just want to make sure, because I know people are. It's great that they have access to what we're reviewing, um, since some things seem to be not shared completely.
Yeah, well, this one was worked on, you know.
Yeah, this week, yeah.
Yeah, this, they're literally, this one was a last minute. Yeah, this, they're literally, this one was a last minute. Um.
I think it would be great if we, if we could, if we could share that.
Yeah.
Colleen might be able to.
Yeah, Colleen, you're muted.
Thank you for doing the work on it too, Hillary and Maro.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did most of it.
You're welcome.
So, Maro, the, can you, and, or Hillary, walk through like the, the added? Cause some of this came as a template from mask, right? And so highlighting only some of the middle parts are really small tweaks to what was already proposed from.
So the additional part from the.
Just to, just to be clear, mask as an M A C, M A S C.
Yeah, Association of School Committee. Yes. Yeah, I know, I know, sorry.
M A S C's policy, suggested policy was a little bit, um, wordy and confusing. Because it got into like, if you're vaccinated, you can choose whether or not to wear masks. If you're not vaccinated, you can choose whether or not to mask. If you're vaccinated, it went back and forth, but it was saying the same thing. Um, so we just took out some of the wordiness in those first two subsections. Um, and then added the section about, um, like bullying won't be allowed. Um.
And the, and the individual choice, we, we added that.
Yeah.
And then added the CDC guideline section. And then the, the, I think the last section.
Giving the authority to the superintendent.
Right. Yeah.
Can I ask a question, um, about, well, I don't know if this is now, this is more for Brian. Um, so Brian, you had mentioned in part of your recommendation that you'd be consulting with staff and medical professionals, um, to monitor. Can you be a little bit more explicit of what that trigger would be? What you would be looking at explicitly, what data, like if it's a classroom? Um, a certain percentage of what would be when that would change? Or is that not something that you would be considering taking action on to implement a classroom? Is that an option that you would do?
I mean, we look at all the data and specifically, the nurses are pretty strong in terms of advocating for what they think needs to happen. Um, so if they were to see, which they haven't, but just, now I'm just making things up. If they were to see, you know, in school spread in a particular classroom, say at the elementary school level, then the option could be that you could mask that classroom.
So you're saying that, um, that would be, that has been a discussion with the nursing staff that, um, that they would consider under an optional, um, mask optional environment, that if cases rose to a certain extent, um, and I'm not hearing exactly what extent yet, but to, to be determined that they would not be opposed to implementing or with, consult with you, a masking for a short period of time for, for that group.
Right. I don't think there's a special number or a particular percentage, and we actually haven't seen it, even when cases were very high, um, in school transmission. So I don't actually see that being necessary.
I only, I only.
But it's possible.
I asked, um, sorry, I asked because I know that with mask optional, you're, and we're also talking, I mentioned this at our last meeting. You're gonna have more, uh, group, you know, small groups potentially. Um, and so there is that increased risk. Um, and I, it is, so I want to make sure that there is a, a little bit clearer understanding of what that would be, what that metrics would be. And if you don't have that tonight for us, it'll be good to get that.
For that?
Some of that, no, some of that may be in a report to us afterwards of what, what specifically we'll be looking at that would be triggering, um, a classroom. Sure, masking.
Oh, my expectation is not that there are hard and fast numbers. I think that if there were numbers that made sense for when it would be time to implement a mask requirement, we would have them in the policy. But I, my expectation is sort of along the same conversations we had in November with regards to closing school the day after Veterans Day. When we were going from one or two cases in a grade or in a school to, you know, one to four to eight. And obviously, I, I believe it was centered in one grade. Um, you know, and I know Brian noticed then and we had discussions about it then, like that was triggering. And I think instead of the, the, um, consequence being shutting down school, it would be, let's have this grade wear masks. And similarly in January, when it was like, so many people were sick that it was getting a little bit tough with finding substitutes and stuff like that. We would obviously want to have, we would want to have masks before we got to the point of not being able to find subs for classes. And so I think that the same way we had those discussions previously, um, we would want to, uh, the expectation would be that before there's consequences like that, we would want to be putting the masks back in place. Um.
I mean, I, I, I assume that would be it, but I don't like to work off assumptions. And I think part of the, the issue is that people have given feedback that there's decisions being made arbitrarily, right? And so I want to make sure that we're discussing what some of those things that we would be looking at. Not, not that we have to be precisely in knowing them, but some of those scenarios that you're talking about, we also had contact tracing. We don't have that now, you know? And so now that layer of understanding in school transmission is a little bit less confident going forward. Um, because it's self-reporting and whatnot, and which I, not disputing is the best, you know, for some, some folks. But we have fewer layers to contain things or catch things earlier. So that's where I would like to know, in the absence of those, um, those tools, um, what else would we be looking at? Because we can't rely on contact tracing as much. And, um, and so I just want to, again, not that we need to have precise, but understanding specifically of what, what those, um, with the, the staff or the team that you'll be working with will be looking at would be helpful for, not only for me, but I think some people in the community as well. I mean, that's part of the emails that we've gotten. So I just want to reflect that is an understanding that people would like to have.
Yep. Um.
Can I just ask a question? Um, Brian, do you, have you seen, has, has any, have any of the nurses seen any uptick since, um, school has been out?
If we return from vacation?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, that's great.
They have new numbers that came in today, actually, and they're, they're still low. I uploaded it to the folder just this afternoon, um, the three-three report. Um, because that was a concern, and I know they came out new numbers on Thursday, so I was trying to get the most up to date. I think it was like two staff and three students or something to that effect. Um, so nothing, um, in great significance.
For some thinking that next week could be the big week that it's going to uptick, the seven to ten days, but.
Very true.
Hopefully the decrease, you know, community-wide decrease will count, cancel out.
Yep.
That increase. Um, my other question would be, so if we implement this effective Monday, um, would that give time for staff that would like to request reasonable accommodations to help with, um, any specific mitigation strategies that they need in order to be, like, you know, if a staff member has, um, a condition that makes them at high risk or a family member at high risk for them to go through the process of, um, being informed about the policy change, requesting reasonable accommodation and having those accommodations. Um, I know it's an interactive process about what accommodations would be needed and then having them implemented. Um, like how quickly can that happen?
I think that can happen pretty quickly. This isn't a new conversation for anybody, especially staff. Uh, they're well aware of it. They're probably on, on screen tonight somewhere, um, many of them. And if not, we'll be sending out a message at the end of the meeting and or tomorrow morning. Um, and if there are staff that have concerns, they'll reach out to their building administration, probably tonight and or in the morning. Which gives us Friday to, you know, take a look at the situation in preparation for Monday.
Okay. I just want to make sure if there's a staff member who will really be at risk by having a classroom full of unmasked kids. Um, I assume even the people who are anti-mask would want to be accommodating to somebody that they know would be at risk. Um, and that that messaging can get disseminated and, um, accommodated to the extent that we can.
Um, Elizabeth? Yeah, I just want to add, I hope that that will extend. And Brian, can you speak to how to extend, extend to, for example, the staff member who said that they had a partner? You know, about, um, who will die if they get COVID. So it's not the staff member themselves, but it is their partner that will be, that's at risk according to their doctor. Um, and then we also got some letters from families whose children are at real risk because of their pre-existing health conditions, really serious ones. So I'm curious about what you're thinking we're gonna do for those people who are at real serious risk. And how will do it in time for the mask, mask to be lifted by Monday?
Well, it really depends on what the individuals need. I mean, clearly they're able to continue wearing masks.
Have, have you been in conversation with anybody about?
Actually, no one's reached out about that. And when I checked with administration today, none of the, they had not heard from any of their staffs that teachers were concerned about being able to work with a mask optional environment.
Well, they did reach out when they wrote, wrote to us and said that, you know, they did reach out. We've gotten the emails showing they're, they're reaching out. They haven't specifically requested accommodations. Um, yeah, but.
I think that was in the comments. It was, um, email we have, we had a public comment.
Yep.
And, and so, I mean, maybe they didn't go directly to the building, but I think informing us and, um, and some of those comments were read. Um, Brian, can I ask a question about general? Um, when we have someone who is just immunocompromised, who comes to, back to school, um, a child or someone who's been in a hospital. Um, I'm guessing this, this would be the sensitivity around some of the similar protocol around that, right? There's not really anything in the classroom. I'm just wondering what is normally done in that kind of situation? There are options that would be available to that child. Um, in, in, which is not unu-, unusual to just outside of COVID-related circumstances?
Yeah.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know. I would defer to our nurses and or, uh, depending. Really the nurses. I don't know what we, what we do typically. If somebody were to come out of the hospital with those kinds of diagnosis, we would accommodate as best we can. Exactly what that looks like. I don't know off the top of my head.
So what, what, what is the, what do you hope for? What is the best case scenario for a kid, like the ones we heard from the letters? Or for kids who are, who have immunocompromised situations? What, what do you think? And maybe, maybe since there are so many people here you can talk to, what they can do? Now that they know that the mask may be able to potentially be lifted on Monday, what can they do to make sure that they are okay to come to school?
And actually for stu-, for, um, I'm sure for a staff, it's, you know, following their chain of command. But for students, if a student has an issue, is the appropriate person for them to reach out to their principal? Or would it be to Jeff?
The nurse, with the nurse?
Um, or nurse?
Yeah, who, who?
And would that be the five oh four process or?
They could certainly reach out to the building administration. And that would give them some guidance. And they can do that. I mean, if I was in that situation, I'd probably reach out to my primary care physician first.
Well, they already, they already have established problems, medical problems.
Right. And I would assume that the people with medical training have recommendations on how to proceed.
Yeah. So for example, a child who the doctor has said, if, um, if the child goes back to school in a classroom that's unmasked, they need this, this, and this to be safe. Um, is the building principal the person to go to or would that be Jeff?
I would start there. I would start with the building principal, who I'm sure they will include, uh, Jeff Ferrante as well, if need be.
Okay.
Okay, what should they expect to happen next?
I mean, that's hard. I think that's an individual.
I don't know. I mean, there's lots of different scenarios.
I mean, I mean, what should they, like, really, basically all of this is people are worried about a lot of things, right? So at what point should they start worrying? You know, what should they expect next so that they can, they can know, okay, so like, next thing, I'll probably hear from this person by this time. Or, you know, like, like within a week, I'll give myself a week, but you know, what, what's the timeframe or how can they proceed so that they can relax and know it's gonna be okay?
If this were to be, policy were to be in effect on Monday, you know, the building administrators would have to get back to them right away.
Well, I hope so.
Figure out what could happen on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
It would have to be a really.
Right, like a quick turnaround. That's, I hope.
I'm, I'm wondering, I'm gonna throw this out to, a lot of people won't be happy with it. But, um, should we postpone the enactment of this until like even Wednesday? Um, you know, what's the rush two days to, so to, for some of this to get in place? I know some of the towns have waited, are waiting until the fourteenth, probably more because of COVID case, you know, the uptick potential. But it sounds like, you know, we, we could be rushing this and maybe a couple of more days might not be a bad thing.
I will say that I know that my school district is on the list of places that have rescinded the mask mandate, but we have not. In fact, we won't even hear recommendations from our superintendent until, until Monday.
Oh, so you're on that Boston Globe list that you said?
Boston Globe list, and I don't know why, because there's been nothing besides we will hear recommendations on Monday.
And I think, I don't know. I think we need to vote on it.
Misinformation.
Yeah, I personally would think that, and also I just am not a fan of citing articles outside of, because I can cite a whole bunch of articles myself, and I just am choosing not to because that's not fair to our decision process and, um, and our community. Because, um, that's not what we're really supposed to be doing right now anyway. Um, but I, I, I think at this point, I would be comfortable voting on a policy, an amended policy. I think, um, I think we, we can do that. The, the date of when that policy goes into effect, we can determine of what that would be. Um, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of people who are, have issue with the language in the proposed amended policy, right? Um, so maybe that might be the first read, I don't know, going around. Is this something that we, we could be acceptable as has been presented in this policy? I don't know, Hillary, if you're, what your thoughts are.
So maybe go around and say, um, putting aside the date of implementation, in general, assuming in the next week or, you know, between now and March fourteenth, would you be comfortable voting for the policy that is in our folder and that's shared on the screen?
Well, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I'd be comfortable with the policy, um, as it's written. And then we could do a vote on, you know, we could talk about the date.
Okay. Um, it, does it make sense to vote on the policy without having a date?
I think we need a date with it.
Yeah.
Cause it has to be an effective, you know, when it's being, you know, it's amended. Cause I know Colleen puts the amended date on it. And so, um, we could think for, for all intents and purposes. The only thing that I would want to amend in the policy, um, and I may have put a note on there was because, was the bus thing? Cause I know that kind of came at a last, um.
I checked that out.
Okay, okay. And then, yeah, so just.
Colleen, if you, Colleen, if you can scroll down a little bit more.
Yeah, it is out. It, it, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't appear there.
Yeah, and then also, but I think the February twenty-fifth, um, adding the citation for the, the CDC updates from February twenty-fifth, I think we would want to include that in the bottom as well.
Yeah, I thought I put in a note saying that we needed to, um.
I think I did. I saw it there, so I, I just.
I don't know what happened to it.
Yeah.
It's not there anymore.
I think if we, um, if we were to add that in there, those would be my more, um, my, my thought is to add in that, that reference citation for the CDC. Because that's kind of what is informing some of our content.
Definitely. And it's basically cited in the policy, so it'd be good to, um, include the actual citation.
So can I make a motion?
Wait, wait.
Well, I think we need the date to make a motion to, for the policy.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion with the date.
Well, hold on. How long can it take? Like, what, so what do you think is a reason? If we want to make sure everyone has their, you know, all their work in order and everything is fine for their kid to go back, what seems like a reasonable timeframe?
To be honest, I think that's operational. I mean, I think that's really on Brian to do that legwork and.
That's why I said, Brian, what do you think?
Oh, I didn't hear.
I wasn't sure who that was addressing. My apologies.
Sorry, I didn't either. But, sorry.
I think we're talking, the majority of people are in a situation that you could make this effective as of Monday to Saturday.
I, I'm saying if there, given that there are some people who have written to us and they have, their problem is that they have kids who are at real risk if they get COVID. Um, you know, and, and given that we're, we are a kind, safe community of learners and we're trying to make sure that everybody is okay. And that a couple of days isn't gonna, you know, it's okay to wait. Like, how many days do we have to wait so that you can make sure that they're gonna be okay? Like, what seems like a reasonable timeframe?
Monday.
You can make sure that they're all, all set for Monday.
I don't know if there's any more that I'll be able to do between Monday and Tuesday. Or Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. I think if they reach out and have specific needs, we'll do everything we can to meet those needs.
Okay.
All right.
I was gonna say, do we want to put Jeff on the spot and ask him? I was gonna say, do we want to put Jeff on the spot and ask him?
Yeah.
I don't think Jeff, I don't know if Jeff is gonna be able, I mean, people have to, you know, because people have to reach out is part of the effort, right? And.
I guess, actually, that's the thing I'm worried about is how do we let them know that they should? And make sure that they can get it in time. I think that that's the thing I'm worried about.
So my fear is, a, a parent that knows their kid, like their doctor has said to them verbally in an appointment, your child won't be safe with the, you know, with what would be in place on Monday. And they've talked about strategies in the doctor's appointment. Tomorrow morning, they email the principal and say, you know, these are my concerns. My doctor says I need X, Y, and Z. Is the school administrator gonna say, okay, you need documentation from your doctor? And right off the bat, they're not going to have time to get documentation from their doctor, get it submitted, get a reasonable accommodation plan and process, and have it approved by Monday?
Yeah, but can I, can I just say something real quick? I want to take a step back.
Yeah, do it.
I think that special educator, special needs families, kids who have high risk, they are very in tuned that this is coming down the pike. This is not hidden. It's been communicated via email by the superintendent very often. And we've gotten feedback, right? We've gotten emails. So I don't want to underplay that there is people who aren't aware that this is a possibility that could happen, because we've gotten emails to that fact. If with all that communication, someone hasn't reached out, and I, maybe there is that, you know, one or two families. I don't know there's any, much more that we could do or the district could do, because I believe that they probably are very in tune with what's going on with COVID, that they're already have things in place. So I, I don't know. I just want to be realistic with what.
My concern isn't so much on the family side, it's on the school side and making sure as a school, we do our best to be accommodating. So we're not saying, you know, you need to get something in writing that could take three days, like, you know, if, if we're setting families up to need to go through, uh, potentially, a process that potentially involves paperwork and multiple back and forth communications in one day, that you know, as soon as, when this is sent out, it's clear on there to reach out to the building principals or through the chain of command for staff, if you have a concern that needs to be accommodated. And that the school really prioritizes addressing those accommodations tomorrow. I think that that's reasonable. I just want to make sure that, you know, as a school and as employers, we do everything we need to do to make sure we're not telling staff, you know, we're sorry, we can't accommodate you.
So is it more that Hillary, I think what I'm hearing is that we want to make sure we send a clear message that it is very important for the school committee, that administrative, there is no administrative burden placed on anyone who identifies themselves at any point to obtain paperwork exemption or whatever, that it's appreciated for the concern. And I think there has to be a level of trust that, um, what that is. I mean, it's hard for us to, you know, weigh each family scenario. And believe me, in my mind, I've tried. I've tried a thousand different scenarios, a thousand different families and how we can accommodate them, and it's not going to happen in one policy. I think, you know, I want to make sure, I want, but I think for us, and it sounds like we can just have to say, Brian, you know, you hear something, I think be super sensitive, make sure that message is very clear to the, the building leadership, to be very sensitive. You know, if, and how that might be, and it would be great to hear, you know, not on an individual case basis, but if this comes up, how we are reacting to that in the future, when it may arise. If that sounds at all what you're, we're trying to get at.
I think that we need to recognize that this, you know, the medical professionals advise making masks optional. However, there are a substantive population for who that's not necessarily safe. And we just need to be sensitive and accommodating. And I think that the school can do that, and I think that we can do that, and I think that we can probably approve this effective Monday as long as, you know, we call about it in that manner.
I want to say that I, I think part of the thing, Mary, that, that language about the bullying, I think that also I want to echo that is very important, because I know people have gone, just not, not in Maynard, well, maybe in Maynard, but not in our schools yet that I've heard. But have gone into establishments and have been mask shamed, essentially. And so for me, you know, I want to make sure that, and I am sure this is probably what many school committees are feeling as well. Whether that, that our staff understand that they really need to be very responsive to any incident immediately that would, one way or the other, when someone's wearing a mask or they're not wearing a mask, that we just send a message that respect on all, all areas is something that we want to, um, is important, for whatever those reasons are, and just we kind of keep reinforcing that, that it's just not acceptable. Because it is going to be a big change and a learning curve for many people and students, and they're going to need support in getting through that when it happens. So.
I, I also think that we also need to let the teachers know that if at any point they, they are feeling like they're not, um, feeling safe in their classrooms, that they, they feel comfortable enough to come forward to their, their building principal or, you know, or maybe even the union or whomever, um, to, to come forward and say that they don't feel safe. Because I know that in, you know, at least last year, I heard from a, a teacher that basically was like, I don't feel, I don't feel safe, but I don't feel comfortable coming forward. So, and that, you know, that's really scary when, you know, you don't feel safe and you have nowhere to go.
Well, I mean, look at the survey results. I mean, the survey from the MEA was very split. But then other areas, you know, I, I guess it's, maybe that is not percolating up to the building leadership, right? So there is that, I think that cloak of anonymity in providing feedback through a survey does feel a little bit more safe. For, for staff, so that does, for me, I take that as maybe people even amongst their peers might not want to, you know, share that, which is, you know, it's, I, I, it's, it's just the environment, unfortunately, how we're in, but I, I hear Mauro what you're saying about. That I, I think this topic brings out some of those highly charged feelings, not, not in the best, not in the best way.
Well, I just think that it's been two years of every single decision we've had to make, as every, every single human, every decision has been fraught. You know, everything has been hard, everything has been, you know, like, like we have to weigh pros and cons, and it's been terrible for every single person. And it's two years of that, you know, for us and then for the people in this room, you know, everybody, and for our kids, you know, every single time. So of course, of course, we're all afraid. Of course we are. Yeah.
Do you have anything else? I didn't want to like, I cut you off last time.
Can I ask questions about just the building? Like, for example, one of the letters we just heard from, and I asked last time about filtration. Can, Brian, you said you'd look into the HEPA filtering in the buildings and how much we could, that would cost and with how feasible that was? And then the, the, the letter we got asked about MERV thirteens. So I'm wondering about, so what did you discover in looking into the filtration in the building?
I don't have an exact price on that yet. I'll work on, we can improve, we can increase our MERV filters to some extent. It's just the machines themselves are not built to go up to MERV thirteen. I think we're at eleven.
I remember, I remember that. You said that last time, but I'm, but I, my question, my, my thinking is that filtration might be a way forward. First of all, we have the, we have ester funding. And second of all, I think that that is a unifier. If the buildings are well filtrated, then I think that that, like, that will be potentially more time without masks, you know, knock on wood, hopefully, in case, if something else happens. And potentially that means that people who feel uncomfortable coming in the building would feel more comfortable. So I think that filtration is really a unifier, and I really like to make sure that we really look into that. Because this is the time to do it. So when do you think you can have that, those numbers and have, have some information about that?
Next week.
Okay, so you'll allow to us?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I really like the filtration idea because it's a mitigation strategy that really doesn't impact the children in any way. It, it doesn't, you know, it's, it's an adult led and adult consequence.
Well, and I think it's also, I mean, it's aside COVID, it's something that we, we have a need in, in that building anyway, so I think it recognizes that, um, just Green Meadows setup isn't.
Well, Green Meadow has the air filtration system, the air, the air purifiers.
But they don't have the same, like, the, the filters are, are not. Right? Wasn't there some difference in their filters?
I think it could be really helpful for us to get not, um, not just an answer to Elizabeth's question, but a breakdown of the different classrooms and what sort of, um, or schools and what the filtration system is and what the, um, so I know we've gotten a lot of comments, um, you know, particularly in August and September, questions from parents about the, um, the filters and the HVAC system and the ventilation and, um, you know, I think there's no harm and it's always good to provide more information.
And then that will help us understand where we need to pinpoint potentially better filters if we, if we can and where we can't. And then what do we do about that if we have to? And then if I can ask more questions, my, another question I have is, um, when, what do we know about pool testing? Is that going to go on for the rest of the year? Do we have an idea of when that might end?
Right now, we don't know. It's currently, it's still funded by DSE. And they haven't given any indication how long or when they'll stop.
Okay. And then how about the take home test? Same thing?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and I think I had one more. But I'll, I'll move on. I'll think of it.
Mary, do you have more comments?
I am, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, Mauro, do you have more comments or questions?
No, I don't think so. Um, I, I am for, um, having the mask. That we, you know, that we would approve the one that we put together. And that it would be effective on Monday.
Natasha, do you have any more comments or questions?
The only thing I could think of, which is about as we, our weather starts improving, is just to really echo the opportunity to have outdoor classroom. Um, and anything we can really do to help in that regard. I mean, just getting the kids outside. Anyway, um, I think at Green Meadow, you have some of those, I don't know if you're able to just go out some of those side doors, um, but open up a little bit as the weather increases, but just to make sure, I don't know if the vents or whatever, just that, supporting that. And maybe hearing about how that, because I know that there was feedback before that some of those opportunities maybe weren't, um, being appreciated in all the classes equitably. And so, um, in the fall. And would really want to hear more, more about that, of how that's happening, wherever we can.
Um, Elizabeth, did you remember?
Um, no, I'm good.
Okay, um, are we ready for, if someone wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the amended policy for mask wearing protocol. Um, I just closed the number on it. Darn it.
Uh, EBCSI.
That one. Effective March seventh, twenty twenty-two, with edits to include the citation for, um, the CDC February twenty-fifth guidance.
Is there a second?
Okay.
And just to clarify, it's the, there was, so there were in the, there was two that were in the folder. I'm referring to the one that Mauro had put in there as the amended policy, just to clarify.
Yes. Um, okay, roll call vote. Elizabeth?
Uh, yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Great.
Okay. Um, folks, I see hands raised again, but like I said earlier, we have the citizens' comments at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to submit an email, they can be added to the record. Um, or you can send emails to, um, any of the folks involved and we will read them and consider them. Um, the next item on the agenda is the town meeting warrant articles review. Um, I think we got them too late to, um, go over them. Uh, is everybody good with tabling that for now?
My question is, what are we supposed to do with them? Because these are town, I mean, I don't remember seeing these before.
This is on the, um, we added this on the annual calendar of events because, um, the way the approach that the town does, like kind of piecemeal, you know, they approve a little bit at a time. And so if we remember what happened with the solar, there was things that were approved and we didn't really get visibility into it. And so we tried to reserve a place that we would at least look at, you know, things that came through. So if the, the board felt strongly or had an opinion or something, we would want to kind of proceed it. We may have no action. And so it's just reserving or holding a dedicated thing. What I did in the interim, because the slug board just recently approved a few, um, on, on Tuesday, I, I created that sheet. And I, I figure I'll just continue to do ad as I, you know, get information from the slug board meetings. Um, and just kind of plug them there. So as you have time, you know, maybe at our next meeting, we can, you know, none of them were, um, highly school related that I, that I read to highlight, um, but everyone, you know, please review. They had packets, like, so I didn't want to attach the documents. So I just, what I did was I put a link directly to where it was in the, in the board of selectmen, so it'd be easy for everyone to access, if that was helpful.
Great. And what's the deadline for them? Do we have another meeting between now and the, well, yeah, the fifteenth is when we're meeting. What's the deadline?
Well, they, um, they haven't done the budget one, so that'll, that'll come, I mean.
So I guess we've got a little time.
Yeah, so there, yeah, so once the budget one, I mean, we have, um, we, I was gonna talk about it later on, but we have our, my budget, you saw our budget subcommittee meeting, so I think we're gonna get an updated recommendation then. And then, um, so that's, you know, the biggie, um, that we're looking for. But I haven't heard any other school-related conversations or, or projects that might be, um, something on a warrant. The only thing that was community-wide, there was a green citizen, um, but that's not school-related, but just community-related. So is that helpful if I just do kind of what I did and just kind of keep sharing that document, add them there to kind of consolidate?
Yeah. You want to email any us know when something's added, so we know to go back and look at it again?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we can talk about it maybe on the fifteenth, our next meeting. Okay.
Thank you. Um, for the proposed cost centers, did Wayne make it back on or, um, yeah?
I am here.
Hi, Wayne. Um, I'm glad you're back. Um, do you want to present the proposed cost centers or is that Brian?
No, I think that's Wayne. That's his area of expertise. It's a much lighter conversation than masks.
I think included in your packet were the, uh, proposed cost centers. Uh, there were questions, uh, as to why I recommended what I did when other school districts used other methods to determine cost centers. Uh, the first thing is, there are some guidance, but there is nothing definitive that says, this is what you must use for your cost centers. This is what it must look like, or this is how you kind of set boundaries. So, um, that's why you see a variety across the board. As I also queried my colleagues on the business manager's list serve, and you see a variety of things that people uh, use for cost centers, all the way from not really having them to, uh, I hear my colleagues complain, we have too many, they're too cumbersome. They're actually prohibitive. So having said that.
Wayne, can I ask, can I ask a question, a step back? Because I know everyone might have a different understanding of what the need for cost centers are and what they are. Is there like a very quick, high level, like you could talk about what the current ones are? And then, um, and kind of like why these, why, what are cost centers important for the school committee? Is that something you'd be able to just touch on a little bit? Because I don't know that anyone.
That would be helpful for me, because this is completely new to me and I don't know why we're doing it.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
So cost centers, uh, on a day-to-day operational function don't really do anything for me as, uh, the business manager or finance director. It is more of a high-level administrative way of breaking up, um, costs. To be honest, more from, say, a school committee control sense. Currently, we have four cost centers, salaries, expenses, athletics. I forget what the fourth.
Transportation, I think it is, right? Is it transportation? I think it's a weird.
I, I, I'm not sure. Uh, it's, it's. I, I, I'm not sure. Uh, it's, 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 one of the reasons I can't remember is because of one, it was set by the town, and two, it really has no effect on us. Uh, and I think, and again, I'm speaking of what occurred before I got here. I think at that time, it was easier for the district to just go ahead and accept the town's cost centers. Now, when I say they only have four, one is with salaries and the other one with expenses. The town, for example, a salary is a salary, is a salary. Whether it is a custodial salary, whether it's the town manager's salary, or anybody in between, a salary is a salary. That's not the case in the school district. I have to track salaries. I have a separate line for a science teacher's salary as I do for a math teacher's salary. Those are all lines in the operational budget of the school district. Um, because when I do my end-of-year report, the Department of Education wants to know, they will break up that data into instructional teachers, specialty teachers, gen ed, special ed. The town doesn't have that type of requirement to report that type of refined data like we do. So, those four, if for control purposes, really um, have no effect on the schools. What some districts use cost centers for, is the school committee will s- say, we will delegate some of our authority to you uh, superintendent and or finance director to move money uh, across cost centers as you see fit to safely and, and operationally operate the district. For example, um, if you have a cost center, let's say that um, one of the cost centers, administration, another one is instructional. So that if you have some type of budget uh, imbalance, say, uh, in administration, Brian spends too much money, so we wanna take some of, so we wanna take some money, say, from instructional to move it into shore up that part. In theory, in that scenario, we would not be able to do that. We would have to go to you as the school committee to seek your permission, because we would be moving money across.